And council members. It was the fourth annual Celebrate CB Recycling Poster Contest. The theme this year was I am an environmental superhero and we got some awesome entries this year. We had nine schools with 15 entries and for the first time, we had Iowa School for the Deaf enter too, which was pretty exciting. First place was for $1,250 that they earned for their school was Flying Girl Superhero is what I'm calling it. It's probably one of the most colorful ones we really received. Jordan Taylor did it. She's in 4th grade at Roosevelt. It says reuse, recycle and be a hero. So that's first place. Second place for $1,000 for their school was Four Ways to Be a Superhero by Alicia Oden, 4th grade from Rue Elementary. And it talks about to use one to two paper towels to save trees, recycle paper, plastic and glass, clean up trash and unplug chargers when not using. So that one had a lot of detail in it. Third place for $750 for their school was I'm Calling Him Globe Guy by Noah Mortensen in 3rd grade from Titan Hill. And he has a globe head and he's collecting trash. He's all over it. And then 4th place for $500 was the Flying Apple Core by, I'm probably going to murder this one, Elise Clark, I think, in 4th grade from Edison. And she's got the flying apple going. Look at that. Her magic powers. The winners will be in the Celebrate CB Parade or they'll be invited to be with us in the Celebrate CB Parade. I think last year for the first time, we had all four that participated with us, which is awesome. And that's May 16th. Well, they'll notify them in the next couple of days and we'll put a press release in the paper. Any questions?
When did they, when did the new designs appear on the sanitation trucks?
The one truck will debut at the Celebrate CB Parade and usually it takes till the first part of summer to get the other couple going. But yeah, they'll be there by July 1st usually is a good date for all the trucks to be outfitted with the new ones. So we'll hold them to that now that we set a date in on camera, July 1st. So thanks so much for judging. You guys were awesome and we actually got them in on time and we're ready to be first on the agenda. We appreciate your help and your support. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks Tony for what you guys do down there and to the council for taking their time to judge. Second on the agenda is Rivers Edge subdivision presentation. Play Lampard.
Good afternoon. We're going to tag team a short presentation. I'll start off and then our engineer will speak to some of the preliminary plant concepts and then we'll end with Noddle Development. Just to run through a few slides with you, in October 27th, the council approved this master plan, which essentially includes two office towers with parking garage condominium towers, multifamily apartment building built with underground pedestal parking and exterior parking. We call these tuck-under apartments also and then more of a townhome type of arrangement to the Avenue B. The, so we've retained HDR and they've got a subcontract with Schneider Associates to do some of the plating work for us in December. HDR essentially doing the engineering plans and specs and Schneider's doing a lot of the survey work and plat work. But what we're proposing is essentially to take the 26 acres that we have and break it into a block structure. Now I want to emphasize that these blocks most likely in the future date will be further subdivided and those may come before you. As you can see essentially, we have, whoops. You know, 40th Street here, or sorry, 40th Street here is a public street, 41st Street, 42nd. And then Rivers Edge Drive is the name that we propose to call the main drive. I think that's what we used in our past subdivision proposals. What you'll see here is an Outlet B. That is essentially what we call a piazza. It's essentially a two-lane street that allows you to drive around this block. There's not curbs, but it's a concrete street with brick on the side, allows parking, you know, and it will serve both the office buildings. But in hours where there's possibly an event, that street could be closed, used for public space to go along with the park. This is Outlet A. Essentially that is the reserve for the pedestrian bridge landing. So that was the subdivision. In your pack, it also is a rezoning proposal. What we've decided to do is look at rezoning the western half of the site. Right now, everything, you see this red line? I don't, can't recall the specific dates, but that's essentially a line that was surveyed, you know, I want to say prior to 2005 when the city disposed of this to Cigna Development. The magic of the line, I think it coincides with the trail. So everything today, west of that trail to the levee is zoned, what we would call R4 with the planned residential overlay. What we are proposing in the rezoning that you're first considering tonight is to add these little sliver here and here to the R4 designation and to take this block here that is deemed for two office buildings to be designated C4. Those classifications, you know, will permit essentially what we have proposed in the master plan. The other thing that you will be proving is a resolution of a planned residential concept, which is basically just tying the master plan into that. What you can probably envision, if I go back, you know, for example, this block here, you're probably going to see that divided into three lots, you know, eventually. This lot, block here, maybe two, maybe more. But as these residential blocks come in, there will be a planned residential smell that will get back to you that you will, planning commission will review and you will review. So that's kind of the outline. I'm going to turn it over to Chris Kooning with HDR. He kind of go over the, some of the engineering details. He said it was going to be brief.
It will be. My name is Chris Koenig with HDR. Some of the aspects of what we're doing as far as the grading, what we're intending to accomplish here is like Don talked about, the Outlet B is going to be the piazza. And so what we're grading that as sort of be level with the top of the levee as it is right now. And so back in 2009, we brought in a whole bunch of fill and we had sloped it away from the levee. And so the idea is that this Outlet A, which is the park and the piazza, and essentially the front entrance to these two office buildings will be even with the top of the levee so that you walk out and have that really grand view. And then what we do is we slope it down as we go down Rivers Edge Avenue. At about a 2% grade, we have a low spot back down here. And so what that does is a 2% is pretty easy grade, so it's a nice walk-around community. This is going to be where the parking garage is and so we're not bringing in fill in that area. It doesn't make, because essentially we're at the parking garage for Block 7 right here. What we envisioned for the condo towers right here, essentially those, the first level of those are going to be about even with Avenue B right now. So at the same elevation. And so that's where we've set them at. And so those, that's why we're not bringing in fill into those two areas. And then also this is Block 6. That's then planted, planned for development. What we also see right here is we have a street that comes around this corner right here. And then we do have stormwater, stormwater ponds, essentially long channels with the idea that we could get some green, green solution benefits through those. Again, now one of the big issues again is we are up against the levee. And so we are, we'll have to submit a minor 408 for the various components as we go through the levee. And one of the concerns also is groundwater in that area. And so what I've shown here is we've got a couple of cross-sections to show you what we have in mind. So what you can see here is this is back, the survey that was done back in 2009 before we did any work at all. And then the dash line is where we filled it up to back in 2009. And then with the solid line up here is what we're proposing. And so as you can see, the top of the levee is even with our first walk, our walkout there. But also our bottom elevation for our garage is essentially the same, is above, same elevation as Avenue B, which is above the elevation that was there originally. And this is the one that's coming down Rivers Edge Avenue, the one to the further north. So again, we have a nice even, so when we have that piazza, it's going to be the big open space for events. It'll be at the same height of the levee and we'll have a nice atmosphere there. And then once, then once we, we'll start dropping off, they'll let, you know, as the street kind of gradually drops down and then here's 42nd Street back there. And so this kind of gives you a rendering of what it looks like. So again, the top of the levee is right here and the front door of the office buildings are essentially walkout right even with the top of the levee. And you have drop down and so the first floor of the garage is right there. And that's again, so we're not, nothing, we're not going down into the ground on this one. So we're keeping it as close as we can to the existing grade, original grade I should say. Again, proposing the streets, we'll have parallel parking up here on the piazza, then also parallel parking on Rivers Edge, some, and on most of these other side streets as well. There'll also be sidewalks and we'll have a bicycle track right along Rivers Edge on the south side. And there'll be a lot of landscaping, which is also in the original design. For the sanitary sewers, there is a, back in 2010, the city constructed a new sanitary sewer at 40th Street that went underneath Interstate 480. And so we're tying into that manhole at that location and bringing the sewers back up and stubbing it out for all the future development in that area. Storm sewers, back in 2009, we, they constructed a new 60-inch outfall to the river that has a river, a levee gate right back here. And we stepped, brought it all the way back to this corner of the levee. And so what we're doing is we're tying onto that and then extending it up into the subdivision. Now we are bringing bigger pipes in here than what we actually need and that is for storage, because one of the issues that we do address is the issue is that if that levee gate is closed, where does the water go? And so we've added in the larger pipes to provide some cushion. And the second part of it is we added two 36-inch connections to the existing 60-inch that's on the north side of Avenue B. And this storm sewer extends and then it ties into the Avenue C pump station that sits right there. And so when the levee gates are closed, this, the water will back up, it'll fill up our subdivision first, but then it'll back up and then eventually get into Avenue C pump station and it'll be taken out that way. And so that's how we're able to model it and show it does work. We are also adding a manhole down here in this lower corner, right here at the corner of the property. And so during a high river event when the levee gate is closed and we have stormwater backing up in there, that does give us the option, the city the option of pumping the water out and removing some of the water out of that area. This all, interconnection also does provide some additional relief. And so when the levee gates are open and you have a big storm event, stormwater from the Avenue C pump station basin can also come through here as well and go out to the river. So it does provide some additional relief that way. And then for the water veins, we're working with Council Plus Waterworks. Our initial connection's going to be down here on the south side of I-480. And we'll bring in a new water main across and then complete this loop within the subdivision. So that'll provide it for the fire, sizing it for fire flow protection for the office buildings as well as the condo towers. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to...
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies. So I guess I'm supposed to cover two things, right Zach? One is schedule and one is the project. So the, as far as the schedule is concerned, we're expecting today that about the 1st of July, there will be two or three activities that start to take place on the site. Overall grading and then after we get a little time in from a grading and infrastructure standpoint, hopefully within a couple of months, we'll be able to start the parking garage and the first office building along with a lot of the hard services that make up the different parts and pieces of the infrastructure. So as far as this drawing is concerned, just to orient you, the rivers here, this is the piazza. This plan shows two office buildings and a parking structure that serves both buildings. And to Don's point earlier, there will certainly be a subsequent plating that creates three lots and very likely it'll create four lots. Oftentimes in a project like this, we'd have essentially each of the three buildings sort of stand on their own lot. And then the common areas that are shared between all of the buildings and the garage within that block could be yet a fourth lot. So if it comes along that way, don't be surprised. It's, it's a way to share some of the responsibilities of the common areas. In terms of the buildings, this is the first building. Let me just go back and say that the image of, that you're going to see is this building and you're looking at it from the west to the east. So it's, it's the first building. It is intended to be a little over 60,000 square feet on four floors, a little bit bigger than we thought it might be when we were here in late October. We've, we feel really good about the building. We're doing a little bit of marketing already. There's been a very high level of interest in the building and so we're really pleased. This building along with the piazza and the garage will all be done at the same time and that'll be probably in the fall, maybe a scooch later than that of 2016. And with a little good fortune, the second office building may be underway before the first building is finished. Then we have another shot. This is the, this, the edge of the south office building. And then this is the south edge of the north building. So you're kind of looking at it from about the interstate, looking north at the south end of the building. So that's where we are. We're really pleased, we're excited, it's happening and the response from the marketplace has been, has been really good. It's early, but it's been really good, really positive, very steady. And we feel, we feel very confident that things are going to go extremely well.
Jay, can you talk about the apartments?
The apartments, yeah, let me, Mayor, let me see if I can get to a map. So the apartments, the major apartment complex goes on this block and we're expecting that they will be starting just about the same time we start. Zach here's got some scheduling to do and the sites, while it's, you know, pretty large site, there's still a lot of site logistic related matters we have to work with. But it's everyone's collective goal that the major part of the apartment project will be done kind of simultaneous to the bill, to the office buildings and the garage. Recall that the apartments don't need the garage. They provide their own parking. But we'd like to kind of get as much of this done at once and get people moved in in, in a timely manner. We think that then something will follow this block, will follow on Block 2 right away. And I would imagine that by then we'll, we'll kind of have Block 1, pretty good handle on Block 1 and be able to talk publicly about who might develop that, those condo towers as well.
Is there any parking below the current grade? There's been that rumor that...
Well, let me see if I can get us back. There's, there's really no parking below the current grade. This is a section looking from the south to the north. This is the south office building and this is where the garage sits. We've been toying with the idea of connecting this building physically with, with the garage below a public level, but it really doesn't take it below the current grade. And, and where we go down, we're further back or east of the levee when we go down. And I think the term of art is the toe of the levee. If, there's a lot of engineers in the room, so somebody correct me, but I think it's the toe, they're all smiling, the toe of the levee. And that's kind of the deepest point. And we're, we're above that and east of that.
Anybody have any questions?
Have you started the permitting process, I assume, already with the...
Yeah, I think we're...
We have, we're preparing to submit a...
We've had preliminary meetings though and feel pretty good about where we are.
What was Block 2 again? Block 1 is the condo towers, Block 2, or are those the townhomes or...
Block 2 is, is one of the two blocks that's kind of divided north and south. There's what we call tuck-under apartments on the south side, fronting on the street. And then there's more townhome or row house style residential living spaces programmed for the north side of the block. So they kind of face opposite ways and...
Right, okay.
This, this kind of wants to be done with this so that that stretch of roadway, there we go, thanks Don, so that at least this is finished in through here. And I, I, what I believe will start to happen here is there'll be plenty of really nice momentum and, you know, we'll be talking to the developers about trying to complete both sides of Rivers Edge Drive, at least all the way to here. Anything else?
How many firm commitments do you have at this point for the, for the office occupancy?
You know, it's not something we can comment on publicly. Got to respect the confidentiality of...
Could you tell me privately?
You know, I'm, as, as I've told you in the past, I'm, I'm happy to visit with you offline, but I have to respect the confidential nature of our negotiations with our clients. I can tell you this, I wouldn't be standing here announcing an office building and a parking garage if we weren't confident we're in a position to move forward.
I would appreciate that offline conversation at some point.
So I have a question on the, on the rezoning. Do I just wait until, can I ask it now or do I wait until we're in the agenda in that part?
Whatever.
So the, the, the residential is, is planned residential overlay. The C4, it's not like PC where there's any design standards. Is that something that's being controlled by your, your department, by the agreement or how, how is that going to shake out?
The C4 does have a design element to it.
Okay.
And this essentially is the master plan as of today.
So the design element of the C4, that's, I mean, you'll have full review of that? Will we see that? I mean, we saw the preliminary architectural...
Well, I would say that you've, you've got probably several chances. I mean, what we have right today is, this is a preliminary layup, how we're going to provide utility services, how we're going to grade the site, how we're going to pave the site. So that we can proceed to prepare final essentially construction drawings, get it in a position to advertise, well, to have a public hearing on the plans and specifications, advertise it, bid it. And that's coming up. So that would come back forth to you before any of these, you know, expenditures occur for water sewer, sanitary sewer, storm sewer streets. The other thing that you can probably anticipate is each one of these will probably have a development agreement. And I would say that we would probably refine the element, each office building, you know, further down in that development agreement and it'll most likely be an attachment. So you could say that that falls under the zoning code or you could fall, it falls underneath the, the development agreement. It probably falls under both.
Okay, thank you.
Don, before you sit down, I'm going to finish my questions. The piazza, parking there, then that, that Outlet B would continue to be owned by the city. It'd be city maintained, how's that planned?
Uh, well, that would be city-owned. You know, it is something that it will be, I assume, a topic in our development agreements of how that is going to be maintained along with other things and other public infrastructure in this area. Our maintenance levels may not be to the level that first-class offices want, so we'll have to address that in the development agreement also.
And then Jay, for the public spaces that may end up being like the fourth lot, are you looking at doing like a Schmidt or something for the, for that area to maintain those spaces with...
Well, it's a great question. We're, we know that something's coming that's maybe a hybrid of things that have been done in the past. As a practical matter, the park, the piazza, the common areas between the buildings, the maintenance and upkeep and cleanliness needs to be seamless. And so we've done it a couple of different ways. Oftentimes these areas are publicly owned and privately maintained. And I think we're probably headed to some structure like that, some arrangement like that. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
So it'd be fees that businesses would pay into some...
Yeah, there'd be some kind of a property owners association and that'd probably get combined with whatever the normal level of city funding is and try to see if we can't get it, keep it simple and have one service agreement for the whole area and have it be pretty seamless.
All right. Thanks.
You mentioned the word Schmidt. As the legislation currently stands now, the only area that you could have a Schmidt is this block.
Is which one?
This block.
Okay.
It cannot do, in my understanding of the law is that you cannot do a Schmidt that includes residential properties. But there is a bill, I think, to allow that. I don't know if it has any traction in the state house, but we're monitoring it, so...
Yeah, and I was kind of really more focused on those commercial areas anyways.
If anybody wants to hear more about this or ask Don questions, tomorrow morning at 7, you can come to Taco John's for Impact CB is having a presentation all about the riverfront. So anybody that's listening or watching at home, wants to come ask Don some questions tomorrow, 7 to 8. You get breakfast and Impact CB is putting it on.
I'll put the alarm on.
He's our speaker, he's our guest...
I'll be sleeping.
Thank you. All right, review agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
On 4B, excuse me, 5B, the, we acquired that property through 657A and the amount is 1,000 and something. Is that, is that all of the money that the city had in it that we're getting reimbursed?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that's the way this was structured.
Okay, so it's, so we're free and clear, we got all of our money back. I wasn't sure, I know they demoed the, the, the building, but, so we only have that 1,000 and some change in it. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything else on public hearings? I know we just talked about it, but is there anything on ordinances for first reading? I know we just talked about it, but is there anything on ordinances for first reading?
I just have one comment, and I don't know who, who decided to do this, but I thought it was a good, a good addition to actually linking the website on the agenda, so that people could just click on that and see the full plan. That was, whoever, whoever did that, was that you, Marcy, or Don? Was that you that did that?
Yes.
No, putting the link in the...
Oh, that was city.
The city? Okay, so thank you for, for doing that. You included a link...
Keep doing it, whatever it was, keep doing it.
You included, you could, included a link so that people who were reading it could click on the link and go straight to the plan? I'm saying that's a good thing. Thank you very much.
I think it happened on accident.
Your staff must have done it. Apparently, your staff did it. Okay, please tell them thank you.
That one should be, oh, yeah, go.
I just noted, and in the language used, it mentioned a, a public hearing set for the ninth of April. I believe that should be the sixth of April, I think.
Good catch. Anything else on that? Anything on the resolutions?
I have something on D, unless somebody has anything on Marcy.
Daniel's here with, who is the person that we would like to hire as finance director, if you want to...
Oh, that's D.
Dan, do you want to step forward?
Oh, okay.
Maybe tell us a little bit about yourself and...
Actually, I only wrote on the back page. I'm assuming that you've all seen my resume or have that available, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. What I want to focus on is what's behind the resume and what's kind of behind my decision to, to come to Council Bluffs if you, if you approve the appointment. I've been in municipal finance or municipal administration for 28 years now. And you can't do it for 28 years unless you really love what you're doing. And I love what I'm doing. And it involves not just crunching numbers. It involves taking those numbers and using them as tools to explain, to set the stage, just as Don sets up a plan that shows Block One and what happens with that. We take the numbers and we use those to set up a plan for what happens in the City of Council Bluffs. I enjoy helping people understand what I do. If I do what I do in a vacuum and people don't understand it, it's not useful. And so it's up to me to make sure that you, the other department heads, citizens, understand what the financial numbers mean. That's where we're trying to go with that. I do not and cannot work in isolation. I have to be a part of everything else that's going on and be able to explain those things that happen. When I came for the interview, I was really excited about the strategic plan that I saw on the website. I've, I've seen a lot of strategic plans in 28 years, and they talk about, well, this is, this is Council Bluffs in 2028, and this is what we're going to have. And then they get put on the shelf when they're all done. This strategic plan looks like something that says, in 2015, we're going to do this; in 2016, we're going to do this; in 2017, we're going to do this. It's going to be used to really plan and, and actively manage the city. And finance has to be an integral part of that. And that's this whole idea that, that we're all part of the whole and that we're all working together on this. I am, I am really looking forward to this. In the end, I'm only as good as the finance staff and the other department heads helped me to be. We're in this together. And so it's up to me to help them also be as good and as competent as they can be, so that we can achieve whatever strategic goals we come up with and you approve for the community. And that's where I'm at with finance. It's, it's not a, it's not a science of crunching numbers. It's an art and a philosophy of using financial information to plan for the success of the city. And that's what I hope I can give Council Bluffs in the time that I spend here. I, I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope you'll see fit to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
I want to say your resume is very impressive, and...
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, I'm very impressed with the context of your remarks today, and so I look forward to your tenure as finance director, and will wholeheartedly support the resolution this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, for wanting to be a part of our community.
Oh, yeah.
See, the rest of it blank.
Actually, that's the budget, isn't it?
I've been, I've been looking at it. I've been looking at it. Okay, again, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to being here.
Thank you. All right, Lynn, you were going to D?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, I, I wasn't very clear from the write-up.
And do you, do you want, because Dan needs to get back to Minneapolis. He'll be here at seven if you need him to be, but if not, he's...
It's not necessary. Thank you.
I'm not sure if I'm going to have to shovel my driveway or not.
Better ye than me.
Snow's over here.
All right, we'll go back to D, sorry about that.
It wasn't very clear to me in the write-up. Is there any, is, is there any cost difference between the, the, this new contract versus the Soil Solutions or whoever they were?
The old contract?
The old contract, yeah.
What we do with the contract is, the contract, we added the CP, CIP, or Consumer Price and CPI, to what the contract would have been last year, so it only moved up 2%, I think is what it was. So it's going to be 1919 this year, or, I think that's where it was, 1919 last year. I can't remember.
So it just follows that same calculation?
Exactly, and that's where, if you go to change, I just put in the contract under number seven there, we did have a typo under the formula. It was 2010, we had a typo. It should be 2015. That would allow us to then move into 75% of the cost of living increase.
Okay, thank you.
Questions while Don's up here? Anything else on the resolutions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. With regard to Lower Bennett, is, is that paid for also? I had a question last time about local option sales taxes about South First area. Matt, I think maybe this would be a question for you. Is, is Lower Bennett also primarily or exclusively paid for by local option sales tax?
When you say Lower Bennett, are you speaking of this phase or all phases?
Well, actually, that's a good question. Both. I, I didn't think that there possibly could be a difference, but I suppose it could be.
This one in particular is 100% anticipated to be funded with local option sales tax. I would have to go back and review all the previous five phases, but I believe they, there may have been one that was GO. But local option is the primary source, yes.
Okay.
I, I was going to ask, it was listed as a GO bonds in the, in the CIP. I didn't know if there's a reason for, for the switch, or it just became more advantageous at some point.
For 16?
Yes, for 16.
I'm not sure we have a 16 CIP yet.
Well, in, in the...
In the draft?
Fifteen's projection out, probably.
Yeah, so in the, the last version that we put together, it was not planned to be CIP, or a GO, I'm sorry. The one that's in draft version that hasn't been to the council yet.
Okay, and the one that's currently in effect, it had it funded by general obligation bonds, so...
So we, we kind of switched priorities once we put together the latest version, moving away from GO for these type of projects.
Okay, so I'll need to look to see where the other adjustments then are, if we're going to make the dollars add work out in the end.
There were, there were several changes from the out year of 15 compared to the current projected year for 16.
Okay.
Unfortunately, just due to timing, we had to move the project along, so as you see, it says, it's planned for the FY16 CIP, but you have not approved that document yet.
Thank you, that answers my question.
And Wendy, do you know when we're going to have that? Are we waiting for Dan to get in?
Yes, we want to have those conversations with Dan in my first, first line.
So, so when do you anticipate that being released?
Meeting is scheduled for the third week, right after he starts, the third weekend of April. He starts April 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the resolutions?
Back to 7C. I, I think the designation being sought was, was it for an entire, that entire area marked in the packet? Did, did a, did a few of the homeowners ask for it? And, and more to the point, what do we expect to, to be the, to the benefit from this designation? I mean, I, it doesn't appear that it's going to be from grant money, that not a lot of grant money flows from, from this, but rather that there's another benefit that's expected to be derived down the road.
Fairly knowledgeable on this topic.
Well, we received a request from the Historic Preservation Alliance. We have done three similar studies in the past, Oakland, Glen, and then there's another one, maybe First Elder.
Bluff Willow Third.
Oh, Bluff and Third, yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what we're asking for, for you to do is submit a grant application. We, quite frankly, don't know the full budget yet, because we haven't bid to see what the consulting services would be. And in that would be some volunteer labor from the Council Bluffs Alliance. So be assured, you will be approving a grant agreement from this Department Cultural Affairs, and at least a memorandum of understanding that, you know, outlines who's paying for what. So, to the level, they've had conversations to, with local property owners on A Street. I, I don't know. I, I really just don't know. I'm not part of that committee, and I, I assume that they've had some outreach, so...
Actually, I could speak to that. I, I have been not involved in the specific project, but involved in the neighborhood in general. And they, they have reached out to, to the neighbors, and they've had, it's been not the primary focus of their, their neighborhood meetings or initiatives, but it's been, it's been a, it's been a priority. And so they, they have reached out to folks. And in essence, a lot of the work, actually, all of it from our end, except for, and it, it's a big accept, for, for professional and technical assistance from, from you, it, it's volunteers doing it. It's people in the neighborhood who've, who are well-versed in historical information, and, and actually, most of them have been involved in the other three neighborhoods.
Right.
Does it itself necessarily bring anything? It, it doesn't have any planning restrictions. A lot of times, people understandably get concerned whether this, you know, what color can my house be, that kind of thing. Has nothing to do with that. The only restriction it'd be is if, I suppose, if you wanted to do, put a federal highway through there, anything with federal funds, there would be some restrictions there, since it's a federal designation. But predominantly, it allows an area to get, the whole history gets written up, so you'll know where, when everything was built, what's still there, so you'll have a record of the history. And it makes it easier, though it's not easy, it makes it easier to get grants and various things to try to fix up the properties. And it does tend to bring the areas together, and it does tend to help with that cohesion. If you look at the three areas that have a historic district now, you'll see a reduction, corresponding reduction in crime. And I, I think there is some causation there, not just correlation.
Okay, that, that's helpful, because when I looked at this, and, and, you're fine, Don. When I, when I looked at this and saw, you know, the rather modest amount of, of grant money...
Yeah.
That we were talking about, backed up by 23 pages of mind-numbing boilerplate contract verbiage.
It's, it's federal government language. And in essence, that, our half, for the most part, if this is typical, and I believe it is, the way it's written and as I understand it, in fact, it'll be in-kind assistance, the, the neighborhood, at the, whatever the IRS rate is, 22 or 23.
For purposes of the study.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a consultant, basically, they, they do, they double-check. If you go online, and, and if you were to Google the, the other areas, which are Lincoln Fairview, which is Oakland Avenue, Second Avenue, that area. And there's also Glen and Park Avenues, the Fairmont Park neighborhood. And then if you, Third Bluff Willow, somewhat like the Dodge House area. If you Google those, you could actually see the, the reports. And so you'll, I think that'll give you a much better picture of, of what the consultant will be, what the consultant will be helping with. It, it's, it's actually a very, very in-depth. It, it will, to the extent possible, and it's pretty good, it'll list everyone who's ever lived there, what they did, what they contributed to Council Bluffs' history. So it'll be about the house's own history, if there is any specific to that building. There are three things, that's one of them. The second thing is, is if the architecture of the building's interesting or significant. We have quite a bit of that. We're very blessed with that. And the third is if anyone famous, either locally or nationally, has lived there. And we actually have a fair amount of that, too. So that preserves it for the history, so people will know it. There's quite a bit that our community has that I just don't think people know.
I agree, yeah. And, and where I was going with, with this is, is I know that you can get the designation by dealing directly with, with the Park Service over in Omaha, rather than going through the bureaucracy in, in Des Moines, which is a whole different avenue. But I didn't know what the, what the advantage was on the other end, once you receive that designation, if it didn't make receiving grants for the...
Yeah, it, it does require, the, the federal legislation does require us to go through the State Historic Preservation Office, which that acronym is usually pronounced SHIPO, I think. That's how I've heard it. If, if you go directly through, I, I, I don't think in the end you'll save time, just in my experience. It looks like it should, but, but it doesn't. It, it, well, it's federal bureaucracy.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it looks easier, but it really isn't.
Okay.
Learned that one the hard way once, so...
Very good. I, I was just, knowing that the, the designation is, is indeed important, I just wondered if perhaps there was a, a easier and cheaper way to go about this. And I guess that depends on how much time to the...
We, we thought so, too, before, and it, it doesn't.
Experience speaks.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good question, yeah.
Other questions or concerns on the resolutions?
Is, is, is the chief here, Chief Kerman? No. Anyone who could speak to Bedunka Ronks? Fairly lengthy list, rather serious, and appears over time, repeated difficulties there. And I didn't, I, I wondered if there was some perspective as to whether, well, first of all, is that, is that, is the applicant here? That's too bad. I, I was hopeful to hear about, you know, if there were any plans in place to try to stop this being a habit. I've got some significant concerns at this point.
You know what is Bedunka Ronks?
I believe I'm sa...
Business has, what is it?
It's at 2327 South 24th, and...
I mean, what is it now? Like, what's the name of it? Is that here?
Yeah, what's it do, business has?
That I don't know. Isn't that the name?
I think that's the name of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Never heard of it.
Oh, it's right down there next to the strip that has Sloppy Doggy.
Yeah. It's the one on the end, like...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah. I, I was hopeful to hear from them, because I'd like to hear a plan in place, and if, if they are listening. I, I just have some significant concerns. I like every, you know, there are, there are plenty of things that can go wrong and things that can be fixed, but I'd like to hear if there is a plan in place. If there's not, I'm not as forgiving for quite as many problems, you know, we're talking... as many problems. You know, we're talking multiple serious assaults, selling underage. It's concerning, and it appears to be a pattern throughout the year, not just based on warmer months.
Think they can just pull that out and postpone it till next meeting?
Yeah, there's no harm done with that. They, they get to continue.
Get you some answers.
Yeah, I'd appreciate, I'd, I'd love to give them a chance to speak to it, because I mean, you know, like I say, there could very well be some very unusual circumstances. And they're, they've got a plan in place to, to combat it. And I'd like to give them a chance to.
All right.
Thanks, Nate. I, I was kind of concerned about that when I saw that list, too.
The others on the applications for permits and cancellation? All right, we'll see you at seven.
Don't we have?
We have executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, we got executive session.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluffs Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.